I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll. Mayor Sorrell, here.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Farini.
Here.
Councilor Marshon.
Here.
Councilor Penelakis.
Yes.
Councilor Hines.
Yes.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer and then Assistant Mayor Alec Hampton will lead us in the pledge of allegiance followed by God bless America.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to get right into the presentation by the Frankie Boomer post number six, American Legion, who have just won their championship trophy. Did you bring it with you? No. No. And the banner for the Military Open Class of the National Color Guard Competition in Nashville, Tennessee. And that's great, men. I'm going to ask Commander Richard Brooks to come forward and say a few words at the podium.
Mayor Sorrell and City Council, I apologize that not all of our members could be here tonight. We have some that suffered injuries, some have work commitments, family commitments. We only have three here with us, but we're proud of our American Legion Color Guard. It's the first time for the state of New Hampshire and the state of Portsmouth for anybody to win a national championship at the American Legion National Convention. And I thank you for the honor that you're about to bestow on them.
Thank you, Commander.
Thank you.
We have a lot of goodies, so hopefully you'll take them back to the ones that couldn't be here tonight. Councilor Grasso is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. From the city chambers, from the council chambers at City Hall, a proclamation. Whereas the Frankie Boomer American Legion Post Six Color Guard is the proud winner of the Military Open Class 2004 National Championship in the American Legion's National Color Guard Competition. And whereas two Post Six riflemen and three flag bearers competed on behalf of the thirteen member Portsmouth Color Guard that performs at many ceremonies and parades in our city. And whereas the Post Six team was judged at the national competition in the categories of rifle maneuvers, flag routines, being in steps, and a uniform inspection. And whereas teams from across the country competed in the Military Open Class comprised of Color Guards with both American Legion and Sons of American Legion members. And whereas this marks the first time a Color Guard team from New Hampshire has won the national championship. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby join with the members of the City Council in congratulating the Frankie Boomer American Legion Post Six Color Guard on winning this great honor and showing its true colors and proudly representing the veterans of the Portsmouth area and our entire community in this distinguished competition. Given with my hand and seal in the City of Portsmouth on this eighth day of November 2004, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Grasso. I'm going to ask Commander Brooks and the Color Guard that is here to come forward to accept the proclamation and your gifts. Are there ten of them, Commander? Are there ten of them?
There's only three present.
No, I am just, thirteen. I might have to give one more bag, but.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations, too. Thanks.
Okay. I want to thank you very, very much. And you men are wonderful. You are an honor to the City of Portsmouth. Thank you. Now we're down to a proclamation that the Assistant Mayor is going to read, and that's a recognition of Jeffrey Howe for achieving first place at the National Wastewater Operators' Competition held on October 7th, 2004.
Okay, Jeff, you've got to stand up. City Council Chamber, City Hall, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, proclamation, whereas Jeffrey Howe, an Assistant Chief Water Plant Operator for the City of Portsmouth, has brought a first place honor to the Seacoast. And whereas Jeff is one of four members of the Seacoast Sewer Snakes, a team of wastewater treatment plant operators who recently returned from a National Wastewater Skills Competition in New Orleans with first place overall trophy. And whereas in order to compete in the wastewater environmental federation's national contest, the team first had to win the New England Water Environment Association's Regional Competition in June. And whereas this team demonstrated superior expertise in laboratory procedures, pump maintenance, safety, collection systems, repair, and overall wastewater treatment process knowledge. And whereas the City of Portsmouth has been very fortunate to have this high degree of expertise available to our community during Jeff's three years of employment. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby join with the members of the City Council in congratulating Jeff Howe and members of the Seacoast Sewer Snakes for demonstrating such exceptional skills that will continue to benefit our communities. Given with my hand and seal in the City of Portsmouth on this eighth day of November 2004, Evelyn Sorrell, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you. Jeff, stay there a little bit longer before I give you, before you come up. The City Manager, John Bowhinkle, would like to speak, and also Dave Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief, but I think that it's important for the public to know that even though this is a competition that has a fun aspect to it, there are a number of things that come out of it that helps the City of Portsmouth. Jeff, since I've known him and since he's come on board with the city, has done a tremendous job, and there have been many innovative things he's done down at the plant that has saved the taxpayers substantial sums of money. His innovation and his dedication to his work is commendable. He certainly is a model for all those in any profession, that he does 120%, 150% when he does it. So I'm very proud that he went on to win this competition with his team, but more important, he continues to be an important component of our team here at City Hall and at the sewer plant. So again, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I just wanted to briefly mention a few points on this. And first of all, when people say wastewater competition, you know, the thought of Ed Norton and those old images come up. And let me tell you that that is the furthest thing from this field nowadays. It's an extremely technical and challenging field. The tests that they had to go through, they had a 75-question written test on everything about wastewater, which goes from physical stuff to chemistry to operating a treatment plant. He was tested individually on his lab procedures, so you have to go in and do the tests in the lab. He had to, they had to, with his team, assemble and disassemble a pump, and that's also going through all the safety procedures and making sure you're doing everything in accordance with all the regulations as you're doing that, while being timed. And also did a safety rescue from a confined space as part of what they had to do to win this championship. The second point is that, again, this is a national championship. This is a conference that's attended by up to 10,000 wastewater and environmental professionals. This is a big deal. I mean, you can imagine going in front of your colleagues on a nationwide level and winning and being the best. I think it's truly an amazing thing that they accomplished this. And the third point is that, as John said, Jeff represents our team. And, you know, I think that the team that we have with Paul Ananias, the Chief Plan Operator, we have Eric Taylor, another Assistant Chief Plan Operator, you have a number of the staff are here. It truly is, I mean, he may be our curtain shilling, but we've got the rest of the lineup there, too. And I think the city has something to be proud of with this wastewater crew that they have. Thank you.
Jeff, would you like to come forward and accept your proclamation and your gift? Did you want to say a few words when you go back? Okay, go right back to the podium. Thank you.
I'd like to say, first, I'm more than honored. I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Sorrell. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, John. I think more important, I couldn't have done any of this, we couldn't have done any of this without the support from some very important people behind me. Steve Parkinson, Dave Allen, thank you, Peter Rice, they couldn't have been around to support, especially Paul Ananias. We went out there a little while back, I said, you know, I'd like to do the wastewater challenge, and I think we can do it this year. We have a lot of good team members. We have three other team members who worked very hard for a long period of time. And since that day, I've received complete support, and I'm going to bring back things that I've learned, trades that I've learned, and we're national champions. Thank you.
Now we're down to the public comment session. We have sixteen speakers, and as you all know, the public comment session is only for one half hour, thirty minutes, so we will cut these down to two minutes apiece. That'll give everyone a chance to tell us what they want to. The first one is Jeffrey Cooper, Park Street, tonight's armory resolution.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, Mayor and councilors. The reason we keep arguing against the armory sites for the library is because of the support we get from the people in the city. And I have here petitions with over 400 signatures on these petitions here that we've collected, plus we have over a hundred responses that we've gotten to the articles in the newspaper from people mailing them in to us, saying that they're opposed to the demolition and they're supporting us, urging us to continue to fight. Two of these envelopes, by the way, had unsolicited financial contributions to our efforts. So on their behalf, I'm urging you to reconsider the motion, to table the motion that's before you, continuing empowering the City Manager to demolish the building as soon as possible, to consider whether demolishing a historic structure, risking violation of a federal statute, bringing downtown to the edge of a residential district, and placing open space in peril of development before giving evaluation to all options is really best for the city. Many of us are concerned for the historic value of the building following Dorothy Vaughn's leadership post humusleep. For me, my largest concern is the vision for the city of bringing the downtown right up to the edge of the residential district. Basically, this proposal brings a downtown-type structure, leapfrogging over the recreation area, which is currently a buffer, which to me says that eventually, sooner or later, all of the space in between becomes a risk of development, especially since there's a language in the city ordinance setting up a fund to receive funds for planned future encroachments on the Pierce Trust. So I'm arguing myself that, and on behalf of those who are primarily concerned with the Pierce Trust, because I think that having it in a sandwich between downtown and the library will eventually fill it in, and Richards Avenue would become like Court Street, which once was a residential area. I believe that the library belongs in the northern tier, according to the northern tier study.
Thank you, Jeff. The next speaker is Scott Hogan from Concord, New Hampshire. He is the attorney for the tests, and he wants to speak on the armory demolition. Counselor?
Yes, I just am curious to see why someone from Concord would be speaking to the citizens of Portsmouth, that's all.
He's the attorney for the tests. Do you want to take a vote to let him speak or not speak?
No, it's all right.
No. Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. I will be very brief. I'm speaking specifically to the request that's been put before you this evening to reaffirm authority to demolish the JFK armory. Specifically, and I'm going to submit the comments, I'm going to be as brief as I can within my two minutes, but most recently, as recently as of last week, the state of New Hampshire has specifically stated that as of this moment, the city has not yet complied with the terms under the MOA, specifically as they relate to demolition of the JFK armory. I have a letter back from the state which I'd like to submit in writing, but the city the week before had sent a letter to the state that said, "We have now complied with the MOA and can proceed with demolition." And the state specifically responded that the city has not yet complied with the MOA and cannot, as we speak, move forward with the demolition of the armory. What follows from that as well is, without completion of the 106 review process, the EPA cannot issue the federal stormwater permit that this project also requires. Also, the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office in the past has said that the Pierce Trust land can't be used for library purposes without it being taken by eminent domain. Our claim is that some of the parking still proposes to use that land for library purposes. And finally, the Rockingham Superior Court has accepted the petition appealing the Planning Board's recent approval of the amended site plan. They've scheduled a hearing in that case for February. I understand the city still intends on moving forward with the demolition of the armory before that case is heard by the Superior Court. And that position obligates me to seek a stay with the court, at least to maintain the status quo until the court issues an order that says that the Planning Board's decision was lawful and reasonable. And I would hope, and our hope has been throughout this process, that it would be, it has been and would still be prudent for the city, given the importance of this project to the community, to have a contingency plan, especially given the obvious problems that have existed with this site from the beginning of the process. I thank you very much, and I'd like, if I may, approach and submit my comments in writing.
Thank you very much. Right to the city clerk, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cabo Teft, Richards Avenue, following the rules.
Yes, good evening, councilors and Madam Mayor. As you know, I sit on the school board and, like you, take seriously our role in protecting and advancing the general welfare of our community. At school board public hearings, some come to speak to us on issues that don't necessarily we want to hear, but we listen because all citizens are entitled. Tonight, I'm in that position in reverse, so please bear with me. There is no honor for the City of Portsmouth in not following its own land use rules. I've been both amused and perturbed that during City Council meetings and land use board reviews, during which the merits of the Parrot Avenue, New Library site was debated, there was a palpable presence of gleeful arrogance, particularly when referring to the cobbled and totally inadequate parking plan for a 38,000 square foot structure, and when the city keeps reminding us they don't have to follow their own rules. At one juncture at a Planning Board review, a City Council reaffirmed with the City Manager the absolute right to not follow their own rules. It is difficult to understand the motivation and timing of such a reaffirmation, aside from the self-satisfaction of the pure exercise of city power. I would suggest that the municipal grace allowed to town and city governments to not follow their own rules is solely designed as a fail-safe mechanism to alleviate situations that could generally harm the public good, and if there were no other alternatives. Not for government to flagrantly and egregiously to do anything they damn well please. When the city plans to invest seven million or more tax dollars and build a centerpiece such as the proposed new library with a totally inadequate parking plan that pretends grave consequences in the future for the surrounding park and neighborhoods, including a total misunderstanding of the intent of allowing itself not to follow its own rules, leaves one to conclude that this decision may be nothing more than abuse of power. I ask that you reject the city's manager's motion this evening and look more carefully into the details of what you are about to authorize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Raymond Bowles, Five Junkins Avenue, New Library, Parrot Avenue.
Madam Mayor and council members, the mayor gave my new address, Five Junkins Avenue, just across the way over here. And I'd like to see any or all of you come and say hello, because I'm very pleased to be there. I'm going to ask you, Madam Mayor, if in turn I may sit down and perhaps talk later, because I'd like to defer to Paul McCackran over here. And the reason I wanted to do that is I called him late after he got back from a court case, as I understand it, all right. And between Paul McCackran and John O'Leary, sitting next to him, the two of them have totaled forty-two years in attempting to get a new library for the City of Portsmouth. And I'd like to have Paul fully heard. If it's time afterwards, I do have a little, I'd like to say, "Thank you, Madam Mayor." Would you please, out of order perhaps, ask Mr. McCackran to come up? I know he's lined up.
Well, if he isn't on here anyplace, isn't he?
Oh, yes, he is.
Oh, okay. That's fine, but if you want him to speak longer, I've got to get the okay of the council. Counselor, what you wish.
Your Honor, is he taking some?
How long, how long are you going to be, Paul?
Two minutes.
Oh, come on up.
Ah, very well. And by the way, Madam Mayor and Council, I thank you.
Thank you. You know how these lawyers are, Paul.
Who has something to say, but it's not as important as what Mr. McCackran has.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I didn't ask Raymond Bowles for this task to be here, but I can do my piece in two minutes. My name is Paul McCackran. I live on Dennis Street. I'm a member of the New Library Committee. In 1969, I was chair of the New Library Study Committee. And I would submit that off and on for those last thirty-five years, the city has been at it in trying to get a new library. And I believe for the last three City Council elections, it's been maybe not on the ballot every year, but it has, because the people who have gained seats on the City Council have been in favor of the new library. Our new library study, our study committee, reached a consensus on the Parrot Avenue site, a true consensus. And how often do you do that in government? I submit that the opposition has been able to make it a celebrated cause, and they're in court, and the court will work its way. But we have our jobs to do, too, and you have your job, and that's to keep it moving along. And I ask you to keep it moving along. Tonight, and the first step is to demolish the old JFK building, which has to be done if we're going to have a new library. And hopefully, we'll have a new library, and it's the efforts of all of you and all of us. And I think I speak for the majority of people in the City of Portsmouth, that we want this library, and that this is a wonderful, wonderful site next to the middle school. And we've talked about that ad infinitum at meeting after meeting after meeting, and I ask you, please do your job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Next speaker is Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive, regarding speaking on the demolition of the JFK building.
Good evening, Your Honor and City Council members. Slightly bit annoyed that somebody jumped ahead of me, because I got here a little early thinking on the list, and you took somebody else later on the list. I would like to see you go along.
Ray Bowles gave up his time for Paul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, the reason I'm here tonight is I'm making an impassionately, compassionately to save this building. You know, Ray, Mr. Bowles talks about these two gentlemen spending forty-two years. Some men gave up their lives to work out of that, to be out of that building. That's a World War II memorial. We can't take that building down. Now, you've got, I didn't realize, but you've got a petition with over 400 people that oppose to this. What you've got to do now, and I'm addressing the reaffirmation of the, to demolish the library by the City Manager, is to have a public hearing. You can't just go ahead and vote this as a council. You must pass this on to a public hearing, because you're hearing a lot of compassionate pleas about this site. And I think when we vote, everybody wants a library. God knows everybody wants a library. We've been wanting this library for years. And had it been put on the right site, we wouldn't be in this problem right now. So there's a problem with the site, and you, as council people, should be listening to the public, over 400 people on a petition, and it is an historic building that should be dedicated to the World War II veterans, which we have nothing in the city for, except for maybe a plaque. Now you just want to do another plaque. I think this building should stand there for their memoriam. I just don't understand why, how you can do anything but have a public hearing on it. I think the public deserves that. So you've got to start now and set up a public hearing to see if we want this building down. And I'm not talking about the library or anything. I'm talking about bringing this building down. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We didn't receive the petition.
Oh, you didn't have one? Oh, you didn't have one?
Somebody said they had a 400.
Oh, yeah.
And we have no petition.
Never turned it in.
Never turned it in.
Okay.
Well, maybe the word will get back to them by some of the people sitting out there. Mr. Eckert, 422 Banfield Road, City Business.
Some years ago, Mr. Sullivan, you know that I have like 10 acres or more, and I had a problem with having a couple of parking spaces on it, two parking spaces, 10 acres. You don't have any parking spaces on for the library, do you? Zip out. This is old stuff. I think it's a deceitful way to go about getting a library. You never named the place, you never named the price for what you're going to do. All we did was vote for a library. I'm for the library. I was for the library. I voted for the library. But you're very, very deceitful. Maybe not you people, but the people that were on there before were deceitful. Couple of years ago, somebody said something to me that there was somebody that had an architect and an engineer in the old library, and they were going to turn it into a law office. Now, how true that is, I don't know. I would like to see the city attorney and the city manager and the city mayor put it all down in writing in black and white what the library is going to cost, what the demolition is going to cost, and what the grounds are going to cost, with no interest charged later on or no carrying charges, a set fee. Can you do that? If you do that, I'll go along with it. Tear that old sucker down. I just hope I live long enough to see everything come out right. I hope I do. I really do. That land was designated as recreation. Recreation. I'd still like to know where all the paperwork is, when the armory came on that property, and how it was given back to the city of Portsmouth. Where are those papers? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eckert. Next speaker is Teresa Garabidi, 80, Buckminster Way, support for the JFK demolition. I dare.
Good evening. I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees, and I just wanted to thank all of you for your ongoing support of the library and the whole process. It's been very emotional for each and every one of us, and I think your dedication has been fabulous. And I can't speak on behalf of the trustees, but we've had many conversations, and we totally endorse your decision tonight, and we encourage you to proceed with the demolition of the JFK Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Bridges, Bridge. I'm sorry, I probably killed that name. 127 Cass Street, regarding recreation. What was that last name?
Bridge.
Bridge. Well, I was close.
I've been a resident of Portsmouth for over 46 years, and I don't live on Richards Avenue. I would like to ask so much question, but wonder about your foresight and your hindsight. For one example, is the sale of the Public Works Building. It was sold to somebody that was supposed to build affordable housing, and everybody was hip, hip, hooray for affordable housing. And now, all of a sudden, they're building condos. Are they going to be as affordable? We don't know. One of your biggest reasons for choosing the Parrot Ave site, as I've read in the paper, was it's next to the Portsmouth Middle School. Now you're already planning on moving to Portsmouth Middle School. Does that leave the library in the middle of our recreation fields? And what is going to happen when Spinnaker Point does not renew our lease on the recreation building out there? We will have no recreation building. Maybe the Conde Nast downtown? Is that practical? Yes, we do need a library, but I do not believe a library belongs in the middle of our recreation fields. Put the library somewhere else. Thank you. And Counselor Hanson, thank you for pointing out the petition when you watched the man leave. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is John O'Leary, 50, Nathaniel Drive, regarding new library.
Good evening, Ms. Rell, members of the City Council, city staff, including City Manager Bohenko. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John O'Leary, and I reside at 50 Nathaniel Drive. I would like to briefly address two issues this evening, one issue being the site for the new library and the other being the timing. First, on the site. As Paul McCackran pointed out, the Library Building Committee has affirmed the choice of the Parrot Avenue site for the library on numerous occasions. Let me say it again. This site has been and continues to be the site that is preferred by the Library Building Committee. We respectfully recognize that there are those who would prefer that another site be chosen. I would also respectfully suggest that it be recognized that the Library Building Committee is the only group that has conducted an extensive review of possible sites and continues to support Parrot Avenue. We believe that this extensive review process has allowed us to get the site right. The second issue I'd like to address is timing. We believe that the city and our taxpayers receive the best value for the tax dollar if the proposed schedule is adhered to. This schedule would have the bulk of this project built during the 2005 building season and is predicated on the clearing of the existing site by the end of this year. To delay this project would jeopardize the cost efficiencies that have been built into this schedule. If we don't bid this project according to the schedule, I believe we will see a significant increase in costs and also the possibility that the preferred construction companies will already be committed for this building season and not available for our project. I would respectfully request that the council vote to reaffirm its authorization to the City Manager to take the steps necessary to provide Portsmouth with the much-needed new library, beginning with the deconstruction and demolition of the existing building on this proposed site. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker, Peter Brasiano, 101 O'Leary Place, global warming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. First of all, I'd like to say that I was hoping to see the Taxpayers Association at this meeting and to present their side of the issue, but they're not here. On global warming, I happen to notice that going over the agenda this evening before I came here, the issue is going to be brought up on global warming. And I hope that before you start discussing and cussing it, you'll want to see both sides of the issue because there are those that have an opposing view of what is out there. Be it right, be it wrong, there's still an opposing view. And tonight, I think you're just going to be presented, from what I can see in the agenda, with just the pros as to global warming. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Ed DeValley, 166 Buckminster Way, New Library.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for taking the time to hear us today. My name is Ed DeValley. I live at 166 Buckminster Way. I'm a library trustee, and I'm here to first and foremost thank you for your tireless efforts and energy in listening to this ongoing battle for both pro and against the library. I must tell you that I've lived here most of my life. I've walked by, I've attended the middle school, I've walked by that armory for many, many years, and to my knowledge, this is the first that I have ever heard of anybody fighting so hard to keep an armory alive. Where were these people before this library was being built? While this armory is, every year, dilapidating more and more, falling apart, it is becoming almost unsafe to even put kids in that place. I would urge you to push forward in demolishing this building. I can think of no better site for the library than to put it next to the recreation grounds where people exercise and enjoy physical activities and the ability to exercise their mind. I can think of no better place for the elder people in our community that have the ability to now walk to the library. I can think of no better place in the middle school for our young kids to be able to walk over and access such a wonderful facility as they will soon have. I can think of no better place for the neighborhood to enjoy by being able to walk over in the evenings and enjoy a facility of this. This is the right place. This is the right time, and I hope that you'll move forward and do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Phyllis Aldrich, 199 Middle Road, New Library.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am chairperson of the Library Trustees and a member of the New Library Building Committee as I was a member of the old Library Building Committee, which is why I was so surprised to see the headline in today's paper that said, "Armory Raising on Fast Track." Sherman warned us five years ago that he would not see this building built, so I'm not sure how fast this track is. I'd like to take exception to that headline. I cannot imagine a project that has received more scrutiny, more review, more public hearings, and overwhelming support from the citizens of Portsmouth. I just urge you to reaffirm your commitment to building the new library on the Parrot Avenue site. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Leah Caswell, 37 South Street, Armory and Pierce Trust.
I've spoken before, and things haven't changed, and I guess I don't expect to change your mind tonight either. With all due respect for these people who have worked so long for a new library, I don't think it gives us the right to break the law. That trust was left to the city of Portsmouth to be used as a park and only as a park. It is blatantly unlawful to even have the parking that's on it now. In the last plan for the library presented at the Planning Board, it had 40 spaces on the Pierce Trust to be used for the library. I stood with Terry Knowles and with Bob Sullivan in that illegally paved parking lot next to Parrot Avenue on the trust a year and a half ago, when I got into the fray here, and I said to Bob, "How are you going to build a 38,000-square-foot library without parking?" And he said, "There's separate issues. The trust and the new library are separate issues." And yet, on this document to be passed by the Planning Board, we are readily admitting that the parking is for the library. That is illegal. You must go to Superior Court in order to use that trust for anything other than the purpose for which it was left by the Pierce family. That's the Division of Charitable Trust. The Division of Historical Resources asked one simple thing. For a long time, we have asked them to support us to preserve this historic building and historic trust, and they have never been able to do that. Finally, they asked one simple thing, a contract. Who of us would hire a contractor and not know what they were going to charge, even a ballpark figure?
Leah, your time is up, please.
I say the city knows what that library is going to cost, and they're not telling the taxpayers. If they can't tell the taxpayers, we can't have a library.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
You're absolutely welcome, Madam Mayor.
Our final speaker is Amy, and I'm going to kill your name too, Brienery or Broker Burner. Thank you. 130 Clinton Street, New Library.
Burner, and it doesn't have a vowel until the end. That's okay. Everybody does that. I'm Amy Burner of 139 Clinton Street, and I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees for the library, and I would just like to say that I'm in support of raising the armory. I understand and respect the opponent's point of view, but this has been an issue for a very long time in the city of Portsmouth, and I'm really looking forward to having a new library soon, not after 42 years of combined experience with library committees. I hope we're not here 42 years later, still looking for that perfect site. I'm not sure we ever will find a perfect site for any new building in this cramped city, but I would love to live right near it. And if our middle school does stay there, I will be really proud to have my daughter and her friends go to the library after school. I think it's a great place to have a library. And middle school children, and those are a group of kids I happen to work with, that's a time where kids tend to get turned off from reading or stop reading, and I think it's great that they'll be partners. So I support the location and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. That ends the public comment session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could we suspend the rules and take the vote on the first item on the City Managers?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Very good. Pass it. Unanimous.
Thank you, Your Honor. The item that is referred is item number one under the City Managers' Items Which Require Action. And as I've presented to you in my memorandum, I'm asking for reaffirmation of the authority to demolish the JFK Armory Building located at Parrot Avenue. I have provided you with a memorandum from the City Attorney, Robert Sullivan, and Suzanne Woodland, the Assistant City Attorney, regarding the deconstruction and demolition of the JFK Armory located on Parrot Avenue to allow for the construction of the new library. As you can see from the memorandum, from the legal department, they are recommending that we proceed with the demolition immediately to maintain the construction schedule that has been put into place by the New Library Building Committee and staff. Delay at this juncture would jeopardize cost efficiencies built into the construction schedule. The legal department has reviewed the various votes by the City Council and has indicated that the City Council has provided the City Manager with authority to deconstruct and demolish the JFK Armory and proceed with the construction of the new library. Most important City Council and New Library Building Committee actions and votes authorizing the demolition of the armory and the construction of the new library at the JFK site are summarized in Attachment A on the legal department's memorandum. Further, the city has proceeded through all the legal, excuse me, all the local land use regulatory bodies, obtaining approvals at every step. Both city attorneys have agreed as a matter of law, the city is not required to proceed through the local land use boards. However, the City Council indicated its preference to involve local boards, and the city has proceeded accordingly, and we have provided an attachment as well, showing all the votes relative to the land use activities. Given the attached memorandum from the City Attorney's Office, as well as the previous votes of the City Council and that of the New Library Building Committee, it's my intent to proceed with the demolition of the armory by the first week of December, if I get the reaffirmation tonight. Therefore, I would ask the City Council to vote to reaffirm its authorization to myself to proceed with the deconstruction and demolition of the JFK Armory Building and to allow for construction of a new library in accordance with the memorandum dated November 3, 2004, from the city's legal department.
Your Honor?
Okay. Yes, Counselor DeValley?
I would move that the City Council vote to reaffirm its authorization to the City Manager to proceed with the deconstruction and the demolition of the JFK Building and to allow for construction of a new library in accordance with the memorandum that we have dated November 3, 2004.
have dated November 3, 2004, from the city's legal department.
Senator.
Your Honor?
Very good. Yes, Counselor Grasso.
I'd like to just say to clear things, the library is not going on any trust property. The library will be built on city-owned land. That's always been a prerequisite for any site that the committee has looked at, and this armory is on city-owned land, and the new library, when built, will be on city-owned land.
All right. Discussion? Counselor Whitehouse.
Your Honor, I am interested in seeing that letter from Mr. McConahan, the New Hampshire Preservation Officer, dated October 27th. When he questions the contract not being completed, this is a memo that should have come to all councilors, a very important memo.
Your Honor, I do have a copy of the letter from Mr. McConaughey, as well as the City Attorney's response to it. I'll pass those down.
I thought we had them.
This is one that Ms. McConaughey had sent on the 27th. I let Bob Sullivan speak to the issue, but it's clear that the city has fulfilled all the requirements in the memorandum of understanding, similar to the construction contract that the city entered into on the high school, and that is basically a construction contract that we entered into with North Branch.
Bob, during the negotiations over the memorandum of understanding with the State Historic Preservation Office, the state office expressed a concern, as incredulous as it sounds, that the city didn't really have any plan to build a library, and that this was all some kind of a ruse for the purpose of deconstructing the JFK. For that reason, it was put into that agreement that before we deconstructed or demolished the JFK, we would present to the State Historic Preservation Office the actual contract that was going to be used to build a new library. In addition, I might add, we showed them the City Council's bond authorization providing the funds to build a new library. The form of contract which the city chose to build a new library is identical to the form of contract which the city has used successfully to date to remodel the high school, a form of building contract called a construction management contract in which the contracting company does not give you a lump sum to complete the project, rather they say, "We will step into your shoes, the city's shoes, and build this building as inexpensively as we can for a set percentage." That's the contract that was provided to Mr. McConaughey. It is, in fact, the only contract that will ever exist for the construction of the library. Therefore, we have satisfied our obligation under the agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office as fully and completely as it can ever be satisfied. It would be an impossibility to provide any other contract because there will be no other contract.
Did you have something else to say, Harold?
No, Your Honor. I'm also reading a letter dating November 4th in response to this communication, and I'd like to hear from him again, Mr. McConaughey, once more before I can vote for this. You know how I've always felt, and I just want to make sure that everything is in order before we allow the demolition of that armory. In fact, Your Honor, I move to table this until time certain, which will be just after the hearing with the Superior Court in February 2nd.
Does Harold get a second? No second, being no second. Are you going to second it, Laura? Okay. Being no seconded, sorry, Harold. Laura, you're next.
I just would like to say that I think the city has been very reasonable with Mr. McConahan or whatever his name is. He cannot stop this project legally, and he told us that in a work session. I think that the staff and the people within the city have worked very hard to get us a library. We're the only city in the nation that has taken twenty-two years to try to build one building, and I hope that this council will go forth and reaffirm the demolishment and finish this and get the library started. Thank you.
Counselor Hines?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this council and previous councils have worked hard to comply with every regulation that could be raised to prevent continuing action on providing the city of Portsmouth with a new library. We have finally arrived at a point where there are no regulations or rules to prevent us from moving forward, and I'm very much in favor of supporting the action proposed by the City Manager.
Thank you, John. Counselor Grasso?
Yes, I would just like to speak in regards to the contract that was mentioned. As co-chairman of the Joint Building Committee at the high school, we started out with a thirty-six million dollar project, where now, because of the extra funds from the state, it is a forty-point-five million dollar project. This project was based on the contract drafted by the city attorney. It's a large document, but it deals with a guaranteed maximum price, and that means that the project will not exceed the amount that was agreed on as a guaranteed maximum price. When we went in originally with thirty-six million dollars as the amount for the high school, we ended up getting a school that was in excess of forty-three million, even before we got the additional funds for the Korea Tech, because the general contractor was able to go out and to get subcontractors to come in for amounts that allowed us to save and build that building, that renovation for thirty-six million dollars. Then we added on the money that we received from the Korea, for the Korea Tech Center from the state. It's a project that I have worked with since, I think it's 2001, and it's been working successfully. Hopefully, we'll be through there soon. It seems like it keeps going on and on, but the contract is a workable document for both sides, and I don't feel that Mr. McConaughey understands the type of contract that we're referring to here. But if it's talking about a guaranteed maximum price contract, the city's in good hands, and it will be built within our budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion before I call for a roll call vote? Yes, Counselor Whitehouse.
Yeah, one last comment, Your Honor. This is probably one of my saddest days of my political career. We're about to lose, and I've stated it many times, a very, very historical building, a building that I remember. I go back to telling you that much history came from that building, especially during World War II. The next generation will certainly criticize the move that certain people have taken in this city during this time period, and it was during World War II in Europe that they identified buildings such as this, and they did not bomb these, the churches, the museums, the armories, and places of history. I mean, we're probably the only city in New England that's demolishing a National Guard Armory that dates back to 1914-1916 era. It has history. That's why the people come to this city, for its history, a plaque, reuse of brickwork, reuse of timbers. It's not the answer to the hands-on type of history that this building has, and I'm sorry to see this move being made by my counsel, and I wish you would just step back and listen to the people once more and take a long, hard look. It's been four years since the site was selected, and I ask you, in a humble way, to lay this, look around, come back. I will support, if we can't find another location for this library, I certainly will support the JFK site. That's all I have to say.
Are we ready for the roll call vote? Very good. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshon?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
No.
Eric Sherrell? A most definite yes. Eight to one passes. Okay, now we're down to a public hearing. We have just one on for tonight. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8, Period 202, Dog Park Rules and Regulations. Laura, would you like to speak to it, or do you want Bob to speak to it?
I'd like Bob to speak.
Bob?
Your Honor, sometime ago, well, not sometime ago, about a month ago, in a meeting with the city's dog committee, there was some lengthy discussion over certain issues that are occurring in connection with the dog park. The particular item which prompted discussion was young children, very young children, sort of roaming in and amongst the dogs, and the possibility that that created a public safety threat. That discussion led to a discussion of the enforceability of the dog park regulations, and at this point, the dog park regulations are really just items which have been put on signs. True enforcement authority in the city of Portsmouth comes only from the City Council and comes only in the form of an ordinance. So it was my recommendation to the committee that what I perceive to be the rules now be brought to the council and put into an ordinance form so that they'll be more enforceable. What you have before you is the product of that recommendation.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up the public hearing, far against or simply to. Do I have any speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Closed. Now we're down to the approval of grants and donations, the acceptance of a donation for the firefighters memorial sculpture fund. Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Acceptance of the GCCF grant for educational workshop on sustainability.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that the City Council vote to accept a $2,500 grant from the Greater Episcopal Community Foundation for the purpose of conducting, for the purpose of funding a one-time educational workshop to train and build capacity within senior city staff, and to do the same for other community leaders regarding the concept of sustainability.
Very good. Did I get a second on this? Very good. Discussion? Yes, Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you for allowing me to talk. Outside the community, how many people do we plan on attracting to this?
Basically, if I might, Your Honor, speak to the issue. This is an issue, I need to lay the groundwork a little bit, this is an issue that came up through the master planning process and the whole issue of sustainable communities. And as I've indicated in my memorandum, before we look at this any further, what we'd like to do is bring the author of one of the books that has been a leader in this area in to do a seminar with senior staff, and then what we probably would like to do is have community leaders, such as Planning Board members, council members that want to attend. We're really not looking to go outside the community for people to attend. We're looking for our community land use agencies and council members to attend this to get an understanding about sustainability. And as I've indicated in the memorandum, we're doing many things now that are outlined as good things to do for a sustainable community in the environmental area. And I firmly believe that over the next few years, we're going to see more and more communities paying attention to these environmental issues. And it was a major issue that was outlined in the master plan. It gives us an opportunity to educate our senior staff as to what sustainability is, because in many instances, we're doing things such as the lead certified public library, the open space parcels of the Great Bog, the Sagamore Creek Headlands, the expansion of public transit and bicycle infrastructure, some of the conservation measures that we're doing in the water division, some of the measures that we're looking at in the wastewater area. So without our staff knowing it, they really are moving in the sustainable area, and we're looking at all those things that we can do, and so that we can, as a community, try to incorporate this into our master plan. I think it's a good thing.
Any other discussion on that before the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now we're down to second reading of, no, wait a minute, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, dash, no parking, dash, Islington Street, dash, Route 1, bypass, overpass. Did you want to speak to that, Alec?
It simply puts in writing, we changed the language as Counselor Whitehouse had indicated, well, that's on the next one. It's this one here, from the Corner Bridge Street, no, it's Southley Side to Cass Street, Route 1 bypass, and the Westin Cafe has been deleted, as was brought out by Counselor Whitehouse.
Thank you. Discussion? I need a motion. We gotta have a motion, please.
I recommend that the City Council move to pass first reading of the ordinance amended as submitted in hold the public hearing, and a second reading at the November 22, 2004 City Council meeting.
Second. Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8, Period 202, a dash, Dog Park Rules and Regulations. What is your wish, Counselor? Who would like to make a motion?
I move.
Panalakis?
I move second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8, dash, 202, Dog Park Rules and Regulations.
Okay. Do I get a second? Discussion? Any discussion here?
Yes, Your Honor.
Third, yeah, third reading on the 22nd. Okay.
Sorry about that, Helen.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, I'd like to ask, will there be any problem in policing this new addition to the dog ordinances? You know? We needed the ordinance in order to police it. I know, but you're adding to it, adding more of a restriction to it. So I'm just asking that question.
Bob?
Actually, what this ordinance does is it takes the informal rules that have been posted on sign and puts them into a formal ordinance. The only addition was that which I mentioned concerning the children.
Good, all right.
Very good. All ready for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Third and final reading of an amendment to the ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, dash, no parking, dash, Lincoln Avenue, dash, Northley Side from Richards Avenue, twenty-five feet westerly from Middle Avenue, one thirty-five feet easterly, and between Miller Avenue and Broad Street. Does anyone need an explanation from the Assistant Mayor on this? Nobody needs one?
Move to pass third and final reading.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We're down now to presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. The first one is a letter from Reverend Margaret Custer, Christ Episcopal Church, requesting permission to put up a permanent sign at three locations.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we basket these and that we refer them, sorry, that we basket the first two.
Yeah, why don't we do that first? Yeah, why don't we do that first?
The two letters.
Uh, what?
Starting signs.
Right. Is everybody agreeable with the basket? Okay. Uh, the second one that goes with it is a letter from Lawrence Floyd, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, requesting permission to install a sign to recognize the location of the church.
And, Your Honor?
Uh, Ned?
Having, having passed the motion that we basket them, I would like to move that we refer these, um, to the planning board with, um, a request that they consider them, and thanks to a, a conversation with the city manager before the meeting, I understand that the planning board may already be in the process of a, uh, conversation about, uh, addressing the issue of, I'll just call it, sign clutter in the city. We have many very, um, worthy and admirable civic organizations in the city, and, you know, these two requesters tonight are no exception. Um, but what I've noticed in my time here in the city...
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Sorry? Are you making up, Alec?
Well, no, I was waiting for him to take a breath.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, for the purposes of the people at home, I just want to, uh, explain a little bit about, you know, the rationale. It's certainly nothing against the requesters, um, it's the fact that on, at major entrances to our city, we have, um, a, an accumulation of individually placed signs which have accumulated over time, which have the cumulative effect of, you know, presenting, um, people coming into the city at the gateways with a, you know, a virtual, visual assault, uh, of sign after sign. Um, I came in tonight on Route Thirty-three and just did a list, and instead of reading all the signs, I'll just tell you, it looks like there's about ten of them, different civic organization and, um, you know, destination, places like Scrubbery Bank, that are all placed on total, you know, uh, light poles and some on their individual poles, and this is in addition to the, of course, required signage like highway routes and, you know, left turn directional signals. So I think we need to address the issue and ask the planning board to give back, come back to the city council with some recommendation, uh, and some kind of plan for, um, dealing with these in a, in a more presentable way.
Very good. Discussion? Uh, yes, John?
I just inquire of Ned, uh, I presume you mean by that not just with respect to these two, but for all signs of this nature? Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Yes, Harold?
Yes, uh, informational, from my own personal feelings, uh, is it a state law, and I can ask the chairman of the traffic and safety or the city attorney, is it a state law that signs must be on a seven-foot post? Can somebody answer that?
I think Bob should answer.
I'm not aware of any law, state, local, or federal requiring that.
I see. No height.
Well, what, the, uh, I think what Harold may be referring to is if there's a sidewalk in your head clearance, there's certain standards that are under the federal highway that John Burke, uh, has to do with, uh, but, so you don't hit your head on them.
But along the highway...
Simply on the side of the road, that's a different story.
Unless there's a sidewalk.
Right. I think that answers your question. My, my only concern with this is if every single church put up the messages that, you know, when their worship services are and all that, that on year, we're going to have a heck of a lot of signs, uh, and we al- always hear a lot about sign pollution, so hopefully the planning board will take that into consideration.
Very good. Does that answer your question, Harold? Any other discussion on this before the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Devin West regarding a trolley stop at the Feaster apartment.
Madam Mayor, move that we, uh, accept this letter and place it on file and send a copy to Coast and, uh, John Burke, our transportation director. Uh, we have this information already, but I just want to make sure that he took the time to write this, this letter, and he's got some more signatures he prepared before traffic and safety, uh, and we've added that as a stop already.
Got to get a second for that before you...
Second.
Uh, okay. Uh, John, isn't here already going to be one there?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
But he had taken the time to prepare before traffic and safety, and he had a few signatures, and he went out and got some more signatures.
Right, right.
And reinforced the need for it, and...
Yeah, we got quite a petition.
Well, I thought that we'd send that over to Coast and let them see that, that service is, uh...
He had already given us a petition.
Right.
A month ago or so.
Right, he added some more names.
All right. We all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to the city manager, and we've taken care of the city manager. So, uh, anything under informational, uh, under the city manager that you'd like to talk about?
Yes, Your Honor, just a reminder that, um, the city hall will be closed on Veterans Day, November eleventh, which is Thursday. Uh, the Veterans Day parade will begin at ten thirty AM from the VFW Hall on Deer Street and go to Goodwin Park. I believe the ceremonies will be at Goodwin Park around eleven AM, is that correct?
Yes.
Eleven AM?
Yes, it is.
And then, uh, there will be a dedication of the POW MIA monument on Saturday, November thirteenth, at one PM.
On Sunday.
Excuse me, um...
No, the POW one is, I thought was on Sunday.
No, it's Saturday.
I changed it.
They changed it?
Yeah, it's Saturday.
Hmm. I get it down to Saturday.
It's Saturday at, uh, one PM, but I'll check that, Your Honor, tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Very good. Is that it on the city manager? All right, we're down to the mayor. I have one appointment. This is, uh, a consideration, uh, for the Economic Development Commission. It's Robin McIntosh. She lives at five eight three, T S I J Way in Portsmouth, and she plans to be here for at least three to five years longer. Um, this will come back for a vote at our next council meeting. If anyone has any concerns about this, please come and see me. All set? All right. Did I?
Let's take a vote.
No, which is the consideration.
Oh, all right. Oh, jeez, I'm not with it tonight, am I? Okay, very good. Now we're down to the assistant mayor, and he's got his Traffic and Safety Committee Action Sheet in minutes of October, uh, twenty-first, two thousand and four.
Second.
Do I get a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
And the second one is, I'll make a motion to move to approve and accept the Parking Committee Action Sheet in minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and four.
Second. Discussion, yes, Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, in the minutes, it mentions downtown parking, and it talks about zeroing out meters. What does that mean, zero out meters? Somebody is, uh, computing and turning the meters off?
No. The correspondence that we had, somebody thought that we had meters that did that. We do not have technologies available in the marketplace, so Portland does not employ it.
I see.
But there are some municipalities that have, uh, and...
True.
A little round thing that goes in the pavement, and when you drive off, your meter goes back to zero.
Yeah, that's what they're talking about.
Even if they had fifteen minutes, the city of Portsmouth does not do that.
We were just talking about it, though. Means Harold can't cruise around looking for time on the meter.
Okay, very good. Uh, did I get a, um...
I second it.
We ready for the vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
And Madam Mayor, the third, uh, item, uh, that I have is to inform the, uh, city council that on, uh, I anticipate that November twenty-second will be my last city council meeting, uh, as a representative. Uh, we're planning on spending the winter in, uh, Florida, uh, and, uh, since my retirement six months ago, and, uh, when Chittenden Bank bought out Granite Bank, uh, they also bought out my, the management contract, as they were required to do, uh, and so for the last six months, I have not been able to do anything in the insurance field, and, uh, I have that opportunity in Florida. We purchased a home in Fort Myers, and I, I tell you, Fort Myers, I'm very nervous about Lionel Tracy and Bob Sullivan arriving at spring training. Uh, they found out that Kurt Schilling is in the same complex that we are, and Pedro Martinez is down there now, uh, so, uh, I'm a little nervous about that, but we'll get some more guard gates up there and, uh, to keep them away. But, uh, I anticipate that the next city council meeting will be, uh, my last, uh, and I wanted to inform the, the council that, uh, I could fly back and forth because I still have a residence here, but I think it's only fair to the people that elected me to have somebody here and that they can pick up the phone and talk to about any issue or visit at any time, so, uh, I give that notice.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. You will be sadly missed by all of us, especially the mayor. Uh, but I would like to say, at our, um, November twenty-second meeting, it will, we'll have a work session at six o'clock, but it won't be a work session, it'll be a cake and all of that for Alec. He didn't want any big affair. So, uh, we'll all be meeting here on the twenty-second of November at six o'clock in Conference Room Eight for our little party. Really feel bad, Alec.
Thank you, Madam.
You have a work session next Monday, don't you?
Uh, November fifteenth. Right, we do. Uh, that will be on Lockett School and, uh, and on...
Sheridan.
Sheridan. Thank you. Uh, Your Honor, you have point of privilege?
Sure.
Point of privilege, uh, when Assistant Mayor had mentioned this to me the other day, um, I, uh, I was quite taken aback that, uh, he will be leaving. Um, he has certainly been a steadying force on the city council. Um, when I came here in nineteen ninety-seven, he was, uh, one of the individuals that negotiated with me and, uh, and did quite a, a good job on behalf of the city, I'm sorry to say, on my first contract, but, uh, uh, he has been the type of council member that, as a city manager, um, that you always strive to have. Uh, he is one that, uh, once he makes a commitment to a, uh, an issue, he sticks with it, and he certainly has, uh, over the last, uh, eight years that I've worked with him, and of course, he's been eleven years on the city council, uh, worked very closely to better this community, and, uh, from my perspective, um, he will sorely be missed. Um, clearly, uh, he's taken on some tough jobs, traffic and safety, parking, and, and the like, so, um, we, we on the city staff are, are very, very grateful that he served for eleven years, very, very sad that he will be leaving.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Um, and we truly mean it, Alec. John truly means it now.
Okay.
We're down to, uh, Counselor Reynolds, news articles regarding global warming.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have a cover letter in the packet, uh, so, uh, accompanying two, uh, news magazine articles regarding the subject of global warming. Um, the letter really speaks for itself. All I wanted to do was to distribute these articles to you. Contrary to the assertion of, um, Mr. Bressiano earlier, I do not desire nor seek the need to simulate a discussion on the subject of global warming here at the council. Um, for the public consumption, these are simply two news magazine articles from the last several months, one August sixteenth issue of Business Week, um, which global warming was the cover issue, cover issue, and, uh, the September issue of National Geographic. So they're there for you, and, uh, like I said, the letter stands for itself.
Thank you, Neil, very much. Uh, now we're down to any miscellaneous or unfinished business. Counselor Whitehouse?
I've said all I have to say, Your Honor. I move, we adjourn.
Okay, very good. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.